Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Malambwe.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here, thank you very much. At this point, we move to public comment, and of course, this is virtual public comment. Do we have any, uh, uh, before we move to the listing of the names of people who sent public comment in, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online?
We do, Mayor, we have four people online. If we could start with R. James McCracken. You have three minutes to speak.
Well, thank you for your time. I'd like to thank the mayor and all the persons for hearing me today. And thank you again for your service and the leadership I have seen from many of you in the previous weeks. It's been very inspiring to see you work hard to make sure our community is, uh, is safe in this time. I, I call today to strongly encourage you to put direct aid on the agenda for the April 27th meeting. Our community-based aid systems are currently overwhelmed. And with the resources we have set aside for our emergency fund, I see no reason why we should not be aiding them in any way possible to make sure the people in our community are, are reduced at least in the impact of this crisis. So I will yield the remainder of my time and thank the council for it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next person.
Is Reverend Dr. Bridgette Black.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you, Bloomington City Council, for the work that you've been doing. My name is Reverend Dr. Black. I'm pastor of Wayman African Methodist Episcopal Church. Here in town, it's the oldest African-American congregation in McLean County. And I'm calling to plead with the Bloomington City Council to use the available emergency funds to mitigate the financial harm caused by COVID-19. I know that the, um, emergency fund is for a rainy day, but it's pouring. It's raining hailstones right about now, and our community needs the help. And, um, a lot of people are caught in between the system. We have, um, young people that are over the age of seventeen. They may be in college, uh, and they may be, um, claimed on their parents' taxes, but they're not getting any money, and they have, uh, bills to pay. Uh, day laborers, those that are have unconventional jobs, those that do not, uh, pay taxes. And so there are a lot of people that are falling through the cracks because of the way the government has set up the, uh, stimulus payments. And so we're asking that the city of Bloomington would, uh, provide direct financial relief to these individuals. And we're asking that it would be put on the agenda, April 27th. Also, there are those that have applied for, um, unemployment. And it takes time for that to happen. People are hungry. People need to pay for their housing. People need money now. And so we're asking for you to please put this on the agenda, uh, for April 27th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you have a, we have another caller.
Yes, we do, Mayor, Zachary Gettrich. Are you there, Zach?
Can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes?
Thank you, esteemed elder people, and I want to say hi to all you cool cats and kittens out there. Right now during the pandemic, the city as a government institution must be a leader and require all vendors and contractors to have paid sick leave for their employees. Seventy-three percent of American workers do not have paid sick leave. Without paid sick leave, civilization's efforts to flatten the curve will take much longer. Just estimating, I figure the current stay-at-home order is probably going until at least June because of the incompetence of the federal government. I also predict that the next year or two, we're going to have rolling COVID-19 pandemics as the novel coronavirus repiques and adapts frustrating efforts at a vaccine. Therefore, the city needs to set up the infrastructure to handle these repeated shocks to society, and paid sick leave is a miss, is a necessity in managing the pandemic. While I know the city cannot mandate that employers not contracted with the city require paid sick leave, it could easily pass a resolution calling on the state legislature to pass an emergency measure requiring this at all restaurants excluding, you know, the actual small businesses who truly cannot afford it. However, the large chain restaurants absolutely can't afford it. And during the pandemic, we absolutely need paid sick leave for all these essential workers, and not just paid sick leave for COVID-19, but all the maladies of the body that could be communicable. Not having paid sick leave is lengthening the first wave of this crisis and will help lead to repeating waves of massive infections. Currently in McLean County, the following restaurants are not providing paid sick leave to their employees. McDonald's, Subway, Cracker Barrel, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, KFC, Domino's Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, Buffalo Wild Wings, and the Flute Food Delivery Service Grubhub. And these are just the ones I've found so far. At the same time, I recognize that our actual local restaurants can't afford paid sick leave even during the best economic times. So I propose that some of the direct aid money being negotiated be given to our local restaurants, like Luca's and Tony's Tacos, both of who are doing an excellent job cleaning and keeping their customers and employees healthy, so that we can help them pay for paid sick leave if their employees get sick for whatever reason and need to self-isolate. So please pass these measures. It could be the difference between a three-month stay-at-home or a six-month stay-at-home. Doing this would show how essential these workers actually are, that we put in place measures to protect them. Otherwise, we're not treating these workers as essential. We're treating them as economic hostages. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, did you say there was another?
We do, Mayor. Um, next up is Louis Goslin. Are you there?
Yes, this is Louis Goslin. Um, can you hear me?
We're, yes.
We can.
Go ahead and start.
Okay, great. Okay, um, yeah, so I just wanted to echo the sentiment of the other concerned residents who, um, uh, have called in. I think that, um, you know, right now, um, is a time that we have to, uh, come together and do everything in our power, whether that's as, uh, concerned residents and neighbors, for those that we live around, uh, or in whatever capacity, uh, we serve our greater good and our community. And I think that that means that, uh, now more than ever, we need leadership from our council members. And I want to commend everyone who continues to show up, um, and do the work that you're, that you're doing, as well as the staff that's supporting you in, uh, making things happen. And I appreciate all the efforts that are being put forward. But I think that as we look at some of the numbers and as they roll in, particularly the, uh, skyrocketing unemployment in our community, we have to realize that, uh, there is a need that is, um, already facing so many, uh, in our personal lives and so many in the, uh, communities that, that our work and our organizing has touched. But also so many more that, um, have these sort of, this, this pending sort of, um, issue of loss of income just on the horizon. And I think that the idea that our, uh, city, uh, because of the leadership on this council has been able to, uh, set aside such a, uh, large amount of money for a rainy day, I think puts us in a good position to help, uh, meet this moment and rise to the occasion to, uh, put up the funds necessary in order to be able to support our neighbors through these struggling times. And so, um, I'm reaching out, uh, tonight in hopes that you'll hear the people who I know are contacting you and calling on you to, um, you know, put forward something in the way of direct aid so that we can help our residents and our businesses, um, move past this crisis. And, um, and again, this is a historic moment and an opportunity for your leadership. Um, and we really need you right now. And so, again, I'm hoping that you'll take this issue up on the 27th and that every one of you will, uh, think about the folks in your wards and throughout the community who need the direct aid, that you have the power to, to open up. So, um, again, I appreciate your leadership and, and creating this opportunity for the public to weigh in.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is that a complete list of the people who called in?
It is. Uh, Mayor Renner, we actually had three others that registered, so I'd just like to read, uh, read their name. They did not call in. We had Carla Bailey Smith and Cynthia Carter and Grace Golick, that registered the appropriate way but did not call in.
Okay.
And, um, if I'm okay to move on to the list of people who emailed?
Please.
Thank you. Um, so just to reiterate our process, uh, because this is a virtual meeting, we have made it so that you can make public comment up until fifteen minutes before the meeting. And you are able, if you'd like to speak live, like the individuals did today, you can register by going to cityblm.org backslash register and choosing the meeting that you choose to provide public comment in. An email is given back to you with the call-in information. The other option is to email comments over to publiccomment@cityblm.org fifteen minutes prior to the meeting. Those that emailed, uh, for this particular meeting were Mary Hellbrigg, Kate Brunk, Eddie Brightwiser, Matt Tosco, Julie Prandai, Dave Cobus, Bridgette, Reverend Dr. Bridgette Black, Sunny Garcia, and Cecilia Long. And with Cecilia, she did ask to speak in public comment, but, um, we do require that you go through the registration process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll, uh, move to our consent agenda, which are the only action items for the Committee of the Whole. And of course, these, uh, the first involves consideration and action to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from February twentieth, excuse me, February seventeenth, twenty twenty, as requested by the Clerk's office. And I'm going to go ahead and, uh, lump, ask for a motion to lump that together with item four B, consideration and action to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from March sixteenth, twenty twenty, as requested by the City Clerk Department. Is there a motion to, uh, approve both of those or are there corrections?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Crable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I think that was Correo. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, stuff isn't showing exactly on my, uh, side, so I apologize. Okay, so motion made by, uh, Councilmember Crable, second by Councilmember Correo. And Madam Clerk, unless there is a discussion, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Malambwe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just want to, uh, remind everyone that, uh, that is actually the, the only action item that we take this evening. We have reports, presentations. And when we get to automatic comments, the automatic comment request, we would have three minutes to the maker of the, or the petitioner, and then a total of three minutes when we get to that. So be prepared. Uh, you get about twenty seconds. So maybe you have yes, no, or, uh, one, two, or three sentences at most. So, uh, just, just letting you know that. And then that, that's an informal kind of poll to see whether we've got five people who would like to discuss that item at our next exciting episode. So at this point, we're gonna move on to item five A, and that is presentation and discussion of the Arthur J. Gallagher Proposal of Insurance in the amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and, oh, I gotta lose my glasses. Nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, I was about to say eight, uh, eighty-five thousand, excuse me, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. Okay, never mind. Nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars from May first through, uh, of twenty twenty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And so I probably shouldn't say anything more about this because I'll probably make more errors. So I am going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, who I think is gonna turn this over to Mike Nugent, who's gonna give us a ten-minute presentation and about a ten-minute council discussion.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, this presentation is from our insurance coverage consultant, uh, Mike Nugent. There's been a fair amount of, uh, staff prep, uh, for this presentation. Also on the line, uh, if there are staff follow-up questions, we have HR Director, uh, Nicole Albertson, and we also have, uh, Alex Rosas that is on the line as well. Uh, this item is one that, uh, will have a quick turnaround. The presentation, uh, you know, COVID-19 got in the way. We probably would have done this about three, maybe four weeks sooner. But definitely wanted to, uh, have the presentation discuss, uh, the property and liability insurance for the city. There's an increase, uh, this year. Uh, Mike's prepared to, uh, comment to, uh, that trend. It's not a Bloomington-specific, uh, trend. In fact, uh, we probably fared, uh, much better, uh, given our past history and how it's been managed by, uh, Alex, uh, and, uh, have saved a fair amount compared to other Illinois municipalities. So with that said, I'm going to, uh, put, uh, put this back on mute. And, uh, Mike Nugent, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Mike?
Thank you. Um, good, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen and, uh, pull up my PowerPoint presentation, uh, which I had a class on from Bloomington IT staff earlier this week. So we'll see how I do. Okay, um, so, uh, just to start, um, every year, uh, we start a renewal process for the May first renewal, uh, roughly in November, where we talk about what's going on in the insurance market, uh, developments that have taken place, and, uh, what a, what a plan of action will look like, whether that's an RFP or direct negotiations, uh, through our broker with insurers. Uh, and after the July first renewal cycle, uh, I was seeing on the municipal side, much more increase than I had seen previously. Uh, it was primarily in the property, but liability rates were beginning to tick up. Uh, so we pushed the meeting, uh, up a little bit, uh, just to make sure, uh, we got out ahead of this. I met with city staff in October, uh, and we talked about the fact that the way the market was at that time, I was expecting to see a ten percent increase, which was very unusual since I've been working with the city. Uh, we've been in a relatively soft market. Uh, we've mostly brought in, uh, renewal decreases or negotiated flat terms, uh, while increasing coverage. So this is a market that, uh, is a bit unfamiliar. As we got towards November and December, for January first municipal renewals, uh, the market actually got significantly worse, especially in the excess liability lines of coverage. Uh, and so we, we kind of stepped back, uh, talked to the city about what was next, went back to Gallagher, our broker, and said, what I'm seeing is somewhere in the thirty percent range. They concurred, uh, and so we told them to, uh, not to leave any stone unturned, uh, in terms of finding, uh, some solutions to, uh, what I was expecting was gonna be a very awful renewal. The, the background for this, and you can see it in the presentation if you've had a chance to read it, is a couple of years of really horrible property insurance, uh, results driven by hurricanes in twenty seventeen and the California wildfires in twenty eighteen. That paired with on the liability side, kind of the significant increase that insurers are co, calling social inflation, uh, with these significant jury awards that are kind of out of proportion, uh, to the damages that, uh, people have suffered. So the, this tick up has caused insurers to step back. And our main insurer on the liability side, Britt Insurance Company, was kind of the first out of the blocks in, uh, late October and early November, indicating that they were no longer gonna offer limits of ten million dollars to a city like Bloomington. And instead, they would offer something much less, and that's being underwritten. And it depends on the, uh, the specifics of an account. And again, on the liability side, Bloomington's loss, uh, experience has been phenomenal for a city this size. Um, we had one property claim, uh, I think you're all aware of it, last March. Uh, but that shouldn't really be a driver. But on the liability side, I was really kind of shocked, uh, to hear that the insurer was gonna pull back, uh, without regard to the, uh, the experience and the profitability they've had with the city over the last several years. Uh, so from that meeting, we got, uh, Gallagher out to the market, uh, to find, uh, alternatives. Um, I'm gonna try and get there pretty quickly here. Give me a minute. So this is, these are the results, uh, that the expiring option is that first column. Uh, the city paid eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, uh, for the current policy period, which ends April thirtieth. Uh, and then you can see the coverages and various deductibles that are in place. So Britt has offered, uh, a renewal, uh, but it's with less limits. So we had to build up to the twenty-one million we have with other insurers. Uh, and that's really where the big cost increase, uh, has occurred. If you look at the excess liability line, uh, it's going from thirty-three thousand up to a hundred and ten thousand roughly. Uh, in addition to that, the property deductible would, would be raised by a hundred thousand. That is driven by the fire for sure. Uh, windstorm and hail is up by a hundred thousand, and that's really a Midwest phenomenon right now in property insurance. Uh, the hail, windstorm, uh, being tornado, uh, market is really, really difficult right now, especially if you have a fleet of outdoor vehicles. Uh, and then the workers' compensation, self-insured retentions, which are deductibles, uh, would also increase in that option. So thirty-four percent increase in cost, uh, and, uh, much more, uh, risk sent back to the city via those larger retentions and deductibles. Option two removes a feature, uh, of the work comp program that you can see boost, uh, the first two lines of workers' compensation deductibles, another fifty thousand, uh, in saves, about seventy thousand, uh, in premium. And then option three was, was the best option, uh, and it's the option that I thought would be attractive when we, uh, learned what was going on and, and when we sent Gallagher on its mission to go find, uh, the best alternative. Safety National Casualty has been providing the city excess workers' compensation insurance only, uh, for over twenty years. They've been a really good partner to the city, and the city's been a great partner to them. Uh, they have made a lot of profit on the city over the years, and I think treated the city, uh, fairly, fairly well, uh, especially in some difficult work comp environments. And about three or four years ago, they expanded into the liability market on a very select basis. Uh, and some of that criteria was, uh, an existing relationship on the work comp, as well as preferred, uh, loss experience. Uh, so I was optimistic that there was gonna be a good fit, uh, with Safety National, uh, and that we would be able to get Safety National in with something under that thirty percent estimate that we had, uh, put in front of the city in February. Uh, so that option three is a combination of Safety National on the property, excuse me, on the liability and the excess work comp. And then the property would be provided, uh, by travelers. In that case, the property deductible is better than, uh, the, uh, the fireman's bond option. Uh, the flood zone A deductible is better, and the work comp deductibles are all less. And that would be a twenty-four percent, uh, increase. So that option, uh, to me was very attractive, uh, option. Uh, we also have options four and five, which, although from a work comp deductible standpoint, are pretty amazing quotes given what's going on in the work comp market. Uh, the additional premium, uh, to Bloomington and the loss of control of its work comp claims, uh, kind of rendered those to, uh, a little bit less of interest as, as option three is. So on options four and five, the, uh, claims would actually be handled, uh, by an insurance program, the Illinois Public Risk Fund, uh, and not by PMA, who is our current TPA. And the city would have to pay PMA additional funds to handle all of those open claims that are, that are still hanging out there. So, uh, it's a competitive program, but it is not, uh, it, it's not the best program, when stacked up against option three, in my opinion. So assuming that, uh, I got concurrence from you all, that option three was the route to go, we then went back to Gallagher and, uh, negotiated that option three, uh, with some additional deductible options. So option six increases the property deductible, uh, from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And other than the fire in March of twenty nineteen, the city's had almost no activity in that corridor. So, uh, the, the additional savings offered by taking this, uh, I think makes a lot of sense, especially o, over the long haul. Uh, and then option seven, uh, increases the liability retention from one hundred and twenty-five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. And same scenario there, there's a fair amount of savings, uh, and the city has had almost no activity in the corridor between a hundred and twenty-five thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. So option eight, which is my recommended option, uh, and it's the total that the mayor, uh, mentioned at the beginning of this item. Uh, it's a sixteen percent increase, uh, and that is a combination of, uh, options six and seven. Happy to answer any, uh, any questions.
Sorry, I muted myself. Uh, any questions or comments from members of the council on this? Of Mr. Nugent or the, of the city staff? But Madam, I'm, uh, I'm not seeing any council members.
You've got, uh, Councilmember Bray? Councilmember Bray?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, just a quick, um, question or just, um, um, I guess, perspective. When we look at the, um, changes with the work comp that, that we'll be facing, can you talk a little bit about, I think the other screen you, you had up showed that our current, um, self-retention slash, uh, deductible, I guess it's more of a self-retention, was three hundred thousand, but in the new option, we'll go to six hundred thousand.
Sorry, no, it's actually, it's not, sorry, it's not six hundred thousand now. We had an option, uh, for the, for the three hundred thousand, uh, as an option, but that's, but currently, it's, uh, split between, uh, police and fire. And for police, uh, it's in fire, it's four hundred, excuse me, it's five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and for all other employees, which are mostly public works claims, it's four hundred and fifty thousand. So the increase in option three is fifty thousand, uh, for, for all types of claims.
Okay, just checking for understanding there. So, um, when the current policy lapses and we enter into a new policy period with the new option that's recommended, I'm hearing you say that the, um, additional amount of, uh, retention to the city will be fifty thousand, not three hundred.
That's correct. That's correct. And that's on claims that occur af, on or after May first. It doesn't apply, uh, to any of the claims that are, uh, that are there right now.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. So now I'd like to go look at some of the other deductibles and self-retentions that are increasing. Because as we, you know, I could, like, kind of walk through this so that we understand what we may be asked to come up with some additional monies, uh, in the coming year, to look after some of these, these pieces. So can you kind of walk us through a couple? So we got the fifty thousand extra for work comp. Where are we?
Sure. So for the property, your current property deductible is twenty-five thousand. Uh, and the, uh, option, uh, the option eight, which is really option six, uh, increases that to a hundred thousand. Uh, the, the market, uh, pushed you, uh, to a minimum of a hundred thousand, uh, given the property claim. And if you had had this property claim in a different market, it probably would not have impacted either the premium or the deductible. But given the property claim happened last March, just as the insurance market on the property side was beginning to tick up, uh, we didn't get anybody interested in offering anything under a hundred thousand. Uh, so I think it's wise, uh, to leverage that, that experience that you have and take the, the deductible, uh, on the property higher.
Yes, it, it, I, thank you for that. I, I do.
Okay, and then on the li-
With that position.
Okay, and then on the liability, uh, your current, uh, your current deductible or self-insured retention on the liability side is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we have an option, uh, the option three, uh, actually includes, uh, that same deductible. My, uh, suggestion is increasing that to two hundred and fifty thousand for the same reason. I want to leverage the, the really excellent liability experience that the city has had, uh, and bring those premiums down even more.
I, I appreciate your work in this, your thoughtful approach, and I'm supportive of your option. At the same time, I want to message to my colleagues on the council that, you know, what what these self retentions and these deductibles mean is that when we do have an incident, we will have to go into the city call first to come up with our part first, and these amounts are now increasing. So we we just, we'll just need to factor that into some of our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. Let's see, do I have anybody else who wants to speak? I'm kind of scrolling through because I don't have a list like I did last time. Of anybody else want to speak?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Nugent, yeah, thank you for your presentation and the work you've done on this. Just a few questions. How do how do we determine, I guess, the amount of limits that we actually need? And and why, say, a reduced amount of limits might be something we would consider?
That's a great question. And, you know, limits decisions are often made with a dartboard and a dart. You know, there there tends not to be a ton of primary reason you we can benchmark. We've had Gallagher benchmark that limit in the past. But there's so many variables that drive benchmarking. And you don't know the decision making that went into someone else's limit, that it's really less valuable than than I would like. What we have used in the past is is jury verdicts that that stun someone. And and years ago, the the one that got us was a motorcycle accident in Hanover Park. And that really drove us to take a look at the limits and say, you know, I think we had fifteen at the time. That's just not going to get us where we need to be today. So I'm comfortable with with where we are, but I do have clients saying, what if we bought less just this year until the market gets a little bit better? And I think it's going to be more than a year before the market maybe ticks back down. I don't think we'll see this sort of percentage increase, but I think we'll definitely not see relief in a year. And with COVID nineteen and the property market, there's just no no, no measure as to what that's going to have, what effect that's going to have on property insurers. So I I'm comfortable with it, but I certainly understand the the idea of maybe putting that money in your in your pocket. I have not had anyone actually do that. I've had a lot of requests about it. And in fact, given the the environment in Illinois, which is considered as a whole to not be very judicial friendly to insurance buyers. And that's not just Cook County, that's throughout the state. If I could, I'd get you to buy more, but I'm not going to try and do that this year.
I appreciate that, and I certainly think those limits are are appropriate. I just wanted to kind of get a little bit of the background of how you, you know, how that was determined. On the work comp, how does the city do with actually having enough claims to meet the self insured retention? Do we have? Can you share a little bit of history on that?
Sure. So that those retentions apply to on an each occurrence basis. So each individual accident, and and those aren't retentions or deductibles that we ever chose. That was forced upon the city over a gradual period of time over the last ten years. Ten years ago, I think we were probably in the three hundred thousand dollar range. But benefits for police and fire are significantly greater. And that is really, at a point in time, it caused an exodus of most of the work comp insurers from municipalities in Illinois. Safety National is the one that stayed the course. But over time, they kept bumping those retentions up until they got in an area where they felt a normal claim was not going to touch them. It was going to have to be a catastrophic claim. And and frankly, this coverage is supposed to be a catastrophic coverage, not an everyday coverage, but that's what they were finding. So that that you've had great experience, though. We don't have, I think we have, when I looked at the data, two claims in the last ten years that have hit Safety National's layer. And that was when you had lower retention. So again, I don't like those retentions per se, but I wouldn't pay more money to get them down, given your experience.
Thank you. One one last question. With regard to COVID nineteen, do you potentially see any of the coverages here possibly applying at any point to protect the city?
I I don't. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of articles about whether property insurance in the business interruption component of it for cities and villages, which is called tax interruption insurance, which you have, is actually triggered. And because that's part of a property policy, the property policy requires property damage in order for the coverage to be triggered. And so your large taxpayers in town who are not going to pay or the income tax goes down significantly or property taxes are not collected. There isn't property damage per se. And the argument from the insurers is, even if there was, once they cleaned it up, they didn't have property damage anymore and could have reopened if not for the governor's proclamation. So I don't believe it's triggered. But I've heard attorneys make arguments that you could call this property damage, and I'll leave that to attorneys. We have, I have directed Gallagher to make a business interruption claim with the property insurer so that you're on record, because the FEMA process, which I I don't, we don't need to get into today, but the FEMA process requires that insurance is the first source of funding for this type of event. And so eventually, you're going to need a property insurer to to take a position, either covered, not covered. And then with that letter or that information, you can continue to pursue FEMA once you've got an idea of what your FEMA recovery might look like. So we have had it reported, but my expectation is there is no property coverage for the city for this type of event.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. We are pretty much out of time. If there's a quick question, we could take it or move on unless if there's a lot more. Excuse me, there are a lot of questions. We're going to need to extend the time, excuse me.
Mayor Renner, I don't see any others that have their hands up.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, then, we will move on to the fiscal year two thousand twenty one budget overview, and we have Scott Rathbun, who's going to give us about a fifteen minute overview. And then we have a thirty minute council discussion, if necessary. So we don't have to spend the time if we don't need it, but I'm
You're going to me first?
I am going to go ahead and go to you first, my distinguished city manager.
Thank you very much. I actually was talking to the city clerk. I didn't know. Didn't know I was live. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We see everything.
All right. I guess where I start is sharing with the the community more so because we've had several discussions with the elected officials. You know, the past couple of weeks prepping for tonight. That will eventually be an agenda item for this Wednesday, two days from now, as a special meeting to get our budget for FY twenty one approved. For the community, the city of Bloomington, municipalities vary, but for the city of Bloomington, we're on a fiscal year that's May first to April thirtieth. So statutorily, we have to adopt a budget, which is why this is coming before council on Wednesday. And then that gives us a backup if something should happen. The final council meeting of April, which is April twenty seventh. The conversations that we've had that are pre-COVID is the proposed FY twenty one budget. COVID nineteen has occurred, and we've been amidst that for the last four or five weeks. And what we did early on, knowing that we were going to have impacts, knew that we had the shelter in place order from Governor Pritzker, started tracking what the impacts might be, what we were realizing at the city, and actually stood up a line item within finance that we could track what the losses were so that we could potentially try to recoup, you know, some of these in the form of reimbursement, depending on what the federal government decides we're able to seek reimbursement for. Our total budget is about two hundred and thirty million dollars. That's one of the larger downstate budgets because we offer so many additional services. We have a utility. We have a park district that's part of the city. We also have garbage collection that's also a part of the city. So we have a number of things to consider. And I've said in the past that, you know, while the city is in a good position, it's not in a great position, nor have we ever commented that, you know, we think the financial impacts to COVID nineteen aren't going to be something that we realize at the city. We know we are. But one of the things that we're pushed up against is this May first start of our new fiscal year. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the FY twenty one budget as proposed. But we have also taken additional steps. It's a financial impacts become much clearer to us as we, you know, go forward. But it will definitely be beyond the May first fiscal year start date for us. As we've set aside equipment, projects, also personnel that will be explained by Finance Director Scott Rathbun on things that if we had to shift during the course of the fiscal year, we can't. And fully expect that that might be a reality for us, but it was too premature at this time to shift from what the proposed FY twenty one budget was. Also, a quick comment about our cash reserves. And I talk about unobligated cash reserves. The city sets at right about twenty two million dollars in unobligated cash reserves. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has a recommendation to all municipalities throughout the United States that you should have two months of cash reserves. That's about seventeen percent. So if we take seventeen percent of the twenty two million, that's about four million dollars. And that would leave us a base of eighteen million dollars that we should have. You know, if we were to use those funds for whatever variety of reasons are. I guess I will give credit to this council and past councils, to my predecessor as well. The city is in a decent position because we've always been preparing for COVID nineteen, even though we didn't know that COVID nineteen was on the horizon. It was about being prepared for an emergency. So the city of Bloomington is in a decent shape, but we also fully expect that we'll have to realize some of those cash reserves to overcome or plug in some of the gaps related to COVID nineteen. I'm going to put my mic on mute, and I'm going to turn this over to Finance Director Scott Rathbun. Scott?
Thank you, Tim. Before I I kind of launch into the presentation, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the previous presentation and and highlight, you know, that's that's the kind of review and process we we undertake here at the city to, you know, to manage our costs. A lot, a lot of a lot of employees' time, staff time, a lot of dedication goes into making sure we get the bang for our buck here at the city. I think we have a very good cost control culture here. And I I think that that was a good example of it. So having said that, tonight, we're going to be primarily focusing on the general fund and the COVID nineteen effects on it. We'll be having a slide related to enterprise funds, which at this point in time, the majority of those excluding golf and the arena, we're assuming are not going to be materially affected. So tonight's focus will be on the effects of twenty and then more time spent on the effects that we're projecting for twenty one related to COVID nineteen. You know, a big, a big part of this was, how do we break down this issue into components? And and really, what we arrived at was, it sounds somewhat obvious, but we've got the shelter in place order, which we know is going to have a very material effect on revenues. And then we assume there's going to be a recessionary effect out through the remainder of twenty one. Kind of going down that path and using those assumptions, that's how we in finance did our modeling to get a projection for twenty and for twenty one. So for twenty, can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So we know there's going to be approximately about a one and a half months of shelter in place. It started the middle, middle of March, it's going to go through the end of our fiscal year, April thirtieth. So what we did in finance, we took the entire general fund, every single account, and we applied assumptions to it. These assumptions ranged, you know, everywhere from fifty percent reduction in per month for sales taxes all the way up to a hundred percent for for video gaming. To give you some other details, we took a seventy five percent reduction on local motor fuel tax, assuming a lot of the workforce is sheltering in place, ninety percent reduction on hotel motel. We closed many of our programs in parks. The BCPA is closed. So, you know, a hundred percent reduction in some of our own programs. And then, of course, there's, there's also some expense effect of that as well. Just utilizing the BCPAs as an example, you know, the artist fees associated with that. So a line by line review was taken for twenty. Just looking at the shelter in place, the recessionary effect is being held for my twenty one comments. And and after going through that process, our current projection is that we're going to have about a two million dollar effect from COVID nineteen. So again, most of that is related to revenue reductions. And we also offset some of those expenses that are being put on hold until the shelter in place is lifted, for example, parks. While we're moving forward with getting seasonals in place, those seasonals will not begin until, not begin getting paid until those programs are open. We also had an issue of the income tax deadline getting extended. Everyone's aware that it got extended to July fifteenth. It's going to have a tremendous impact on the state's budget. Well, it's going to have an obvious impact on our budget as well for twenty. Now, our assumption is that most of the revenues that we are going to receive in April were related to twenty nineteen calendar year income. So as opposed to an overall revenue reduction, we're kind of seeing that as a revenue that's getting pushed out into the next fiscal year. We're not expecting to see those revenues until August or September even. So that that revenue recognition is not going to be allowed into twenty. So combined, the combined effect for twenty twenty on the general fund, at this point in time, we're looking at approximately two point seven million. Now, since I've developed this slide, I should say that February revenues have come in, they've come in a little bit better than we assumed. So we're hoping this is going to be more between two and two point seven. But for now, being conservative, we want to be use two point seven as our net effect. So showing our fund balance roll forward. We began the year at twenty two point one million before COVID nineteen came up as an issue for us. We were projecting about a three hundred thousand dollar unplanned use of fund balance. So currently now, we're projecting a three million dollar unplanned use of fund balance. As part of the year, though, we had one point one million dollar in restricted fund balance use primarily related to the BCPA creativity center improvements and some restricted utility taxes that we're going to use for pension liabilities. So as of right now, we're projecting our twenty twenty any fund balance to be approximately between twenty and twenty one million. Now, having gone through that, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about some of the accomplishments that, you know, occurred during twenty twenty as well. We had a very strong first nine to ten months. I mean, the local economy has been really chugging along. We were one point three to one point five million dollars ahead of budget as of the end of January. And this, the strong economy for the city and the strong results and the cost controls, that that enabled us to address strategically address, which the council did, the sickly buyback issue that was before the city. And and that had a one point one million to one point two five million dollar impact on the budget. So not only were we still projecting in the twenty twenty fiscal year with a strong fund balance, we've also accomplished addressing sickly buyback and put us in a in a position to to go into twenty one in a pretty decent position and be able to kind of, I'll say, creep into the year and assess the impacts of COVID on a bit by bit basis. It's a very fluid situation, which I'm going to get into a little bit more in just a moment. You know, depending on when the shelters are lifted, we just don't want to make a lot of decisions now that we don't have sound information for, but we want to be prepared for those. And that and that's the purpose of tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. Now, before I go into the twenty one modeling we did for the general fund, I just wanted to highlight a distinction between our citywide budget, two hundred and thirty million. That was what's mentioned previously. General funds, a hundred and ten million. And then the non general fund is a hundred and twenty point one million. The non general fund includes enterprise funds. I started off the presentation, I did I started off the presentation, I did comment on these enterprise funds. Um, we're not currently assuming that they're going to be materially affected, uh, by COVID-19. We know that there will be some effects, um, whether or not consumption goes down. Now, we looked at, we looked at some consumption from the 315 to 415 timeframe from last year to this year and consumption. Uh, water consumption is actually up. So, um, not to ma- make light of it, but you know, people are sheltering in place. They were flushing toilets at work and at schools, they're flushing toilets, you know, at home now as well. Um, and then we may have an impact on, um, delayed revenues or defaults. Um, we're not able to assess that just yet, there's kind of a delay in, in that impact, uh, but we're going to be watching that very closely. So I want to highlight that and just, you know, outline that some of the material effects of the, of the sheltering and the recession. Really going to impact our, our tax revenues. Um, but right now, we're not assuming that they're going to materially affect, you know, water, sewer, storm, solid waste. You know, where those fees are dedicated to the infrastructure, uh, and the services within those funds. Um, and, and the fund balances and, and several of those have been accumulating over years, you know, for the purpose, uh, of, of, um, acknowledging that infrastructure need. I have my, uh, line at the bottom, exceptions are golf and arena, which I, I mentioned earlier. Of course, tho- those are subsidized and we have taken those, um, those, uh, funds into account when we did our analysis and adjusted our transfers that the golf fund would needed for 20. And as well as when we get in 21, we've, uh, addressed that as well. Uh, next slide, please. FY21. So I, I've kind of, uh, mentioned the approach to this. How do you model, um, the financial impacts of COVID for 21? Um, we were looking at information that just like everyone else, you know, out on the internet, related to, um, economic impact, decreases in revenues, et cetera, et cetera. Um, some, some methods just applied a blanket percentage. Um, we chose to break it down, uh, and to do some scenario modeling based on the shell, combination of sheltering per month, with a recessionary tail. So, you know, if, if the shelter in place gets lifted May 1st, we'd have potential recessionary impacts for the remainder of the year. If it gets lifted on June 1st, that'd be one month of shelter impact with 11 months of recessionary impacts. And then obviously July 1st would be two months with 10 months of recessionary impact. Um, we use the same assumptions for the material impacts on revenues that we did for 20. Uh, those ranges again, 50% from, for sales taxes up to 100% for video gaming, applied it to parks. Uh, acknowledged the reductions potentially in expenses as well. Ran through the reductions that would be incurred in asphalt and concrete related to, um, lowered locomotor fuel tax. And the lower home rule sales tax and, and ran that through the entire, uh, general fund activity. Then we had to come up with a recessionary assumption. Um, a lot of information, uh, suggested out there on the internet related to that as well. Um, what we decided to do was, you know, try to find a model event in our past, um, that we could look at. So we chose the 2008 recession. Um, which, uh, for home rule and state sales tax, we, we had about a 3 to 5% reduction in revenues during that timeframe. Uh, compare that to the overall, uh, the broader economic, uh, impact during that same timeframe. And then, um, also took, uh, an article from a rating agency that mentioned that, um, a severe outlook for the economy would, would include a 7% reduction in economic activity. So taking all those together and then adding a little bit for, for cushion, um, we came up with eight and a half percent for our, um, assumed recessionary impact for the remainder of the year. Now, the model that was built, um, it, it's, it's the flexible model, we can do what if scenarios, we can, we can plug in a different recessionary amount. Um, we can build additional tabs for a diff- different shelter, uh, timeframes, one, two, three months. So wanted to, to come up with something that we could do, what if scenarios, um, and, and look at all of them, but, um, for, from an initial standpoint, tried to come up with something that was, uh, conservative, um, yet reasonable. I guess conservative and reasonable. So, um, you can see on the screen here, um, the results of our modeling. Uh, the shelter lifted May 1st, recessionary impact only, we're looking at approximately a $5 million, uh, protect, projected effect on the general fund. And then from there, it kind of goes up a little over $2 million for each additional month of shelter. Next slide, please. So given that information, um, you know, what, what are our, um, action steps that we can do? Well, as we mentioned, we want to be prepared, um, which scenario to prepare for. Well, at the very bare minimum, we want to prepare for scenario number one, and that was a $5 million impact. So we went through, um, the budget and, and isolated large, the larger buckets of available funds. So from our capital improvement fund, um, for 20, um, I think it was common knowledge, we were looking at, uh, having a, a, a city hall move to the government center. We'd allocated 1.5 million dollars roughly for that. Plus, we, we delayed another project. Um, unforeseen, and, and we reserved those dollars unforeseen, um, major repairs for facilities of 200,000. So that freed up 1.7 million dollars. The Marcus Street Garage, um, the full repair was budgeted at 1.33 million. Um, our facilities manager, um, has projected that we could spend $500,000 and address all the public safety issues for, for the garage. So that's 830,000. Parking deck garage, we had a $70,000 savings there. Arena garage delay 100,000. We, um, tasked the, um, the fleet manager, uh, to run through the entire equipment list for the coming year and determine what could be delayed. Now, of course, the fleet manager always, um, is sure to remind us that, uh, any delay in repurchases for the, the equipment he's targeted, um, will result in additional servicing costs, but we think it's, um, it prudent to have identified those pieces of equipment that we can delay indefinitely. Um, at this point in time and free up dollars to, um, address this COVID issue. Contractuals and commodities, um, contractuals and commodities, those are very large. I reached her here, um, very large buckets in, in the budget. Uh, contractuals is 113.3 million, commodities 8.5 million. Um, we've, we've already hit those, um, categories very hard, just going into 21. But we know we can come up with another half million dollars or probably more in that category. I'm giving, um, the, the process that COVID or the effect COVID has on our revenues as we progress, uh, through the year. And then, um, u- usually utilizing kind of a mixed, uh, approach of funding, you know, between projects, equipment, um, actual, um, services, service related expenses, and then fund balance to come up with the $5 million. We, um, applied a 1.25 million dollar, um, use of fund balance to round out the 5 million. Next slide, please. So to summarize our, our, our approach, um, we know the COVID-19 financial situation is fluid, and we also know that we're, we're not going to understand fully the impacts for a couple of months. Many of our larger revenues are, are on two to three month delays. So, uh, what can we do now? Well, our recommendation is to avoid making any global decisions now, uh, given the degree of change needed is still yet to be determined. Um, we don't want to make a decision now that's going to impact, um, something that we wouldn't have to ma- had made that decision for six months. But we also don't want to, uh, get ourselves in a bind early on. So what have we done? We've prepared by doing the scenario planning and identified $5 million in backup actions. We're keeping our eyes kind of, um, on activity related to, uh, bidding and what, what, what might be, we be committing to now that's going to affect the remainder of the year. Well, asphalt and concrete, um, is a, is the example for that. Um, most of that activity, the construction season occurs between now and early fall or late fall. Um, the revenues are, um, realized over the entire year. So, uh, acknowledging that asphalt and concrete, uh, bid reduction, they're going to, they're reducing the bids that we're going out to by over a million dollars. So, um, taking that into account now. Um, we know we have strong reserves and this is providing us some flexibility to kind of assess as we go. Uh, and, and we want to, um, communicate to the community in the council that we are going to be vigilant and very proactive in our approach to FY21. Um, we have confidence in our process. Um, we, we chart our revenues, as soon as they hit our bank account, we chart them. Um, you know, we have years of revenue tracking in, in our, uh, Excel documents. Um, we have a contact at Department of Revenue, uh, we're always on top of our, our revenue, revenues and, and hopefully which way they're trending. We have department budget, um, meetings every month. We, we do reviews. We're continually assessing expenditures and where we are with our departments. And then as council members and procurement reviews or memos come through, uh, finances involved in, in those reviews as well. And it gives us a heads up as to what's, what's coming, what's being discussed out at the department level. Um, getting involved again, for example, in the asphalt and concrete. Um, what else are we doing? Uh, Tim mentioned this, but, um, the city is actively involved in, uh, reviewing the potential FEMA reimbursements. Um, our procurement department manager, Carla Muriel, she's, she's heading up, it's very complex. But right now, we've assigned a project code, uh, within our accounting system to track, start tracking all expenses. Uh, the, the communication we received, the message we received is that track everything and, and, and figure it out on the back end because, um, we're hearing that they haven't even figured out everything that's going to be applicable, applicable uh, for federal, uh, resources on the other side of this. So they're writing it as they go. So right now, we are very actively trying to figure out, um, what we need to track, how we need to track it, how we need to document it. Um, so there's, there's constant attention being applied to this issue. Um, we're confident in that, uh, we have the processes in place to, um, to address things as they occur. And, um, we know we have, we, we still have a strong locally economy behind us. Uh, just from a personal standpoint, I was at Menards the last couple of weekends, I know I should be social distancing, but I'm also building a house and I, I'm having to pick things up that are ordered and, uh, the place is packed, has been packed. Um, our farmer's market, um, I think there was, last I heard was a $15,000 pre-order that would, that occurred, uh, over the la- over last weekend. So, um, our economy is, is still strong and, and we're hoping we're going to bounce back strongly after this. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
We'll move to the question, uh, answer, comment portion. Are there, uh, I'm going to ask Madam Clark for some assistance on this.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Milawonway has his hand up.
Okay.
Moboka?
Okay. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to ask Scott, um, about the use of fund balance and how do, how would the bond rating agency react to that, especially given, uh, COVID-19?
Well, um, I'm going to say that, I guess I'll answer that in a couple of different part, uh, methods. Um, our bond rating has been, uh, where it has been, um, and with our fund balance well below where we are currently. And, um, I would expect, you know, most municipalities are, uh, confronted with the same situation. I think by agencies, look at management's plan and making sure you have a plan. And you follow through with your plan. So as, as long as there's reasons behind your use of fund balance. I mean, we have an event that's out of our, uh, control right now. We want to maintain our services and our infrastructure for our city. So as, as long as we document our reasoning, uh, and our approach, I, I think.
And one other question with regards to FEMA, so that could be addressed to you or Tim, uh, based on his experience. But when, um, what has been the experience in terms of the timing of reimbursement? So how far into the future or how soon into the future might we see, uh, reimburse, reimbursement with that?
Do you want me to take that, Tim, or?
Go ahead and I, I've got a comment as well.
Um, my understanding, and this, this is my first rodeo on it, and, and Jeff's been in several of the calls as well. Um, it will, it will take some time after the event is over, uh, to get reimbursed. You, you can, uh, attempt to, uh, do a projection and get funds earlier, uh, as long as you document. And then, uh, I, I can't remember the percentage, but they'll, they'll fund a certain percentage of your projected expenses. Um, but as far as the, the final settlement, settlement, I, I think it, you know, they're talking about, you know, here from now kind of thing.
Okay.
And I think that's accurate as well. This is, uh, this is not going to follow the, uh, typical FEMA reimbursement where we're trying to collect, uh, public assistance. Uh, so this, this is something that's entirely new. Uh, we've connected with, uh, a consulting group, a disaster, uh, recovery group and trying to, uh, follow some of their guidelines and modeling. Uh, I'm still very connected with, uh, FEMA, have reached out. And Scott's comments were spot on where they are, they're, they're writing this as they go. Uh, there's a lot of municipalities that, uh, are suffering tremendously. Uh, not saying that, uh, we couldn't be in that situation at some point, but we aren't, uh, necessarily today. And that's not necessarily on our horizon. Uh, but that also, uh, we maintain that position, uh, with fiscal, uh, vigilance like Scott was talking about.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Moboka, uh, the, uh, there are very few cities that are not tapping into reserves right now. Uh, and I, I, I believe the US Conference of Mayors figure was like 93% or 94% already, and we're not even into the crisis. Just, so I, I, I doubt we'll take any hit for this bit of modest, uh, tapping into the reserves. So, uh, others that want, have questions, comments? Madam Perk, can you see people?
And, uh, Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to just say, uh, thank you to the finance department because I've been communicating with, uh, friends of mine, business owners that are all over the United States. Um, as all this has been unfolding and asking what they're hearing from, um, their elected officials and stuff. And, um, we're getting more details and more information than anybody else is. And the fact that not only did we have, uh, are we having a conversation about it, but we're having a conversation with, um, multiple different models depending on how things evolve. And we're having a conversation with a list of things that says, okay, here are, um, not only here is what we think the effects are going to be, but here's how we can react to those effects. Um, I think that speaks loads to, um, staff preparedness as we go along. So thank you, Scott and finance and Tim and everybody else for doing that. Um, I, I also wanted to say that, um, you know, this is exactly why we spent, um, time and effort building up that emergency fund balance. Uh, right? Because if we end up in a scenario where we're not reopening until July 1st, which, um, please, please, please let that not be what happens. But, um, you know, we've got enough, um, cash in the bank that we could keep the city running, we could keep first responders, um, fully functional and out and doing their jobs and taking care of things. And, um, I think that there are communities in Illinois that can't say the same thing. I think that there's going to be some places that are going to be in really bad shape and, and while we're not going to be happy, um, we will at least be solvent and flexible to react to whatever else comes our way. So thank you all for the presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthew. Appreciate that. And just as an e- estimate, I've been working with the 75,000 and up mayors. And it's 75,000 and up population mayors. There are about 11 of us in, in Illinois. Uh, and we're, uh, addressing our federal representatives, uh, for some, uh, changes in some of the federal reimbursement rules. But Rockford's estimate was well over $14 million in the next two months. And Rockford's a little bigger than Bloomington and Normal combined, but that, that's a, a huge hit for a city that, you know, really can't afford it. So we are, as I think as Tim said, we're not in great shape, but we're in, we're in good shape, uh, at, at least right now. So, uh, other members of the council, Madam Perk, can you see others who are?
Uh, Councilmember Black.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and Scott, if you don't mind, could you pull back up your screen, uh, and go to the, uh, the second slide in your presentation? I just, I, I would like to, while you're pulling that up, I just want to walk through a couple of pieces here. And, and I know you kind of talked about this and we've talked about this in the past and it's become kind of a topic here. Uh, if you go to the next slide. So, so talking about the fund balance here, um, in our reserves and our emergency reserves. And we'd been having a conversation prior to anything COVID related, uh, regarding our reserves, how much money should be kept in? And we'd been having a conversation prior to anything COVID related regarding our reserves, how much money should be kept in there versus what we had. And we really have done a lot of work to try to keep our reserves where they need to be, and in many cases above and beyond. So this, the second bullet points, the bottom one, the effects in the general fund balance. Sounds like we, you know, we have 24 million in the bank, if I'm understanding this correctly. Is it, am I tracking that number right? Because this is going to be important.
22 to start.
22 to start, okay. And then about 3 million of that is, some of it COVID related, some of it other stuff is going to come out, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then projected fund balance, use of fund balance, 1.1 million, leaving with, with 20.2 million, correct?
Right, yes.
And then we would need, we would have, in order to meet our very basic bond obligations and everything else, that, that number was like, what, 18.6? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, it's, we're, I think we're just kind of rounding it to, it's 18.3 on $110 million, so $18 million.
Okay, so, so about one, just under $2 million, one could say is, is above that number of what we, the bare minimum we have to have. Am I under, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't mind going to the slide where you project out, I think it's number five or six, just a couple more down, I'll give you a heads up, not that one, that one, yes. So, so in the case in these projections here, what we're looking at is, you know, if May 5th roll, or May 1st rolls around, maybe about $5 million in effects recessionary only. That, that is that $5 million list of projects that we'd have to postpone or cancel entirely, correct?
Correct.
So if, if we're looking at a June 1st timeframe, we would, that 5 million is there. And then what would basically be 2.3 on top of that, and that, that's where we come out of the reserve. Am I, am I following my tracking correctly?
Well, it could come out of the reserve or we could make expense adjustments between now and then.
Gotcha, but assuming all things being equal, that, that's where we come from. The same principle goes for July 1st.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be like 4.5 million. In, in some way, we have to come up with those dollars, correct?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. So, so out there, you know, in the, in the conversation, I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, $20 million reserve. That's not really that accurate because we have to have the money to be able to fund government services. Because when people call 911, a police officer or fireman or EMT is going to have to show up. So the, the way that I'm viewing this is that we have just about 2 million-ish in, that we can look at. But we have to be very, very strategic because, you know, we don't know what, when the shelter is going to be lifted. And you guys have done a really, really great job of tracking some of these numbers based on, I think, very realistic estimations. So I appreciate that, that deep dive. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Madam Perk, can you see others? I'm kind of scrolling through.
I can't, Councilmember Bray.
Councilmember Bray.
Thank you, and thank you Scott so much for that presentation. And again, to, to staff for all of your professional work and taking on these issues and, and doing the modeling that you've done. I appreciate Alderman Black walking us through the numbers because they, they do stare at you from the page. When you think about the fact that every month that the shelter in place continues, we're looking at a $2 million deficit. And very quickly, it can eat up the financial strength that is, that has been, that the city financial picture. And so I just, but yet, you know, the modeling was based on a rescission, a recession model. In a town like Bloomington that, that does have some, I guess I'll call it some insularity from, from some of the certain sectors that, that have deep recession impacts. In other words, when we look at our student population still comes to town and still spends money. And we look at the insurance sector, a lot of the insurance jobs are, you know, don't get as affected by recession. And so folks had opportunities to go and still spend monies. So, and I do appreciate using this as a model, but we have to recognize that that's probably, that could be worse than that, right? And Scott, I think you've spoken to that. So as we look at all the deliverables that we're charged to do, I, you know, I'm just glad you're on our team and working on these things and being intentional. But I think we all need to look at the idea that $2 million a month is, will become a big number very quickly. And my final thoughts are that the conversation around the COVID effect is not that it'll simply be a light switch that once the shelter in place is, is lifted or somewhat modified, that we'll immediately see a return to spend. Because of the nature of COVID, people won't be able to do that. There'll still be some, some impact on revenue there. And finally, we know that there may be a second event in the fall that's being projected. So again, I just appreciate the work you've done in crunching the numbers. But, and, and it helps those of us like myself that aren't necessarily a numbered person. It's, it's daunting, there are challenges ahead, but I'm just glad you're, you're, you all are on the team to help us work through it. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. Is Madam Perk, is there anyone else that you can see?
There is Mayor, Councilmember Crable.
Councilmember Crable, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to do, also express my appreciation to you, Scott, and to Tim Billy and, and all the staff about what, what you've done and putting us in a good position and looking into the future as to what may happen. Just a couple of quick questions on the fund balance. What is the actual mandated amount that the, if any, that the city has to keep as a percentage?
There's a, there's a policy, I'm not sure it was ever adopted, it was, it was 15% is the policy I've seen internally.
Okay, and, and what we're talking about here in your presentation, or I think what Tim mentioned was a, a 17%, which would be two months worth of expenses, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, Scott, could, could you just clarify, that's 15% of the general fund, not of the $230 million?
That is correct, that it's on a fund by fund basis.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Other questions, anyone else from the council? Madam Perk, do you see anyone else?
Nope, there are no other hands up.
Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you to our staff, thank you Scott, thank you Tim, and all the staff that have put so much time into this. We very much appreciate it because obviously we, we're reacting at a macro level to what you do every day on a micro level. Thank you. At this point, we move to our council initiatives. And we have a discussion regarding the funding of the city of Bloomington Township through Minister Direct Aid to Bloomington residents requested by Councilmember Jeff Crable. And before we go there, Councilmember, and I confirm this with our legal counsel just to be sure, and I want to make sure that we're being fair. Councilmember Crable, because he's filled this out, has three minutes. And we have about three minutes collectively to respond. And that means we've all got about 20 seconds. And I will, I'll start, but I'm going to fall within my 20 seconds in terms of the reaction. And what we're looking for, this is not a vote, it's kind of like a vague straw poll, do we move forward with this? So either say yes, no, or if you've got one, two, or three sentences, that's about all you got time for. So I'm going to hold you to that, but if the Councilmember Crable has the floor for three minutes, Councilmember Crable, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. My initiative is to place an agenda item under the April 27th meeting to discuss the city providing direct aid to residents in need. The April 27th meeting is an appropriate time to have this discussion because during the same meeting with, we will also be discussing what the township and nonprofits are doing in the space. We as a council have already started to have these discussions and meetings with the city manager and with outside advocacy groups. I know all council members are concerned about how this health, how the health and economic crisis that's affecting our community. My goal would be for us to have a direct aid program ready before the township and nonprofits are overwhelmed. We are just seeing the beginning of the impact. In March, more than 5,000 people in Bloomington Normal filed for unemployment benefits compared to 400 in February. At some point, moratoriums will end and rent and mortgage payments will become due. We also know from experience that during times of economic recession charitable giving drops, as it did after the 2008 recession. The city can coordinate aid with nonprofits, but the city needs to take the lead. We will be receiving community development block grants from the federal government. We have accumulated, as we've talked about, the $22 million reserve that was collected over time from people when they purchased gas or groceries or pay their income taxes or property taxes. Our residents need some of that money back. I suggest that any aid be administered to the township, a governmental body accountable to us as trustees. Township already provides some aid to those who are indigent, indigent, but we have a whole new group of people who have lost their jobs and have never relied on outside aid before. We should make sure that aid only goes to people in need. And any aid should be coordinated with the aid provided by other nonprofits. Eligibility should be simple, based on proving job status, residency, and what expenses they have to pay and they cannot meet. The goal should be to put money into people's hands as quickly as possible. Our city manager and staff can look at other cities for guidance. While I share my ideas with you, the purpose of my initiative is to continue this discussion at the April 27th meeting so that we can come to a consensus on how we can financially support our residents in these unprecedented times. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming in under budget, Councilmember Crable.
Can I call a point of order real quick?
What?
Yeah, so the, the initiative says that we want to vote on direct aid and Jeff was just saying, discuss. Can, can we talk about why that's different?
I, I think we can just assume we're either discussing, and I think Tim, Tim and I talked about this earlier, I think that's a minor point. We're not, we're either not going to vote, we're just going to have it on the agenda. I think whether it says it's a vote or whether or not it's a discussion is, is, is a moot point because the council can decide on that. Is that correct, Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, in the time in between when Alderman Crable first filled out his council initiative, then I explained actually what the process was. He thought that there might be more discussion when it's first brought up, which is tonight. And then that we might be prepared for this to be an agenda item on the 27th. Explained what the process that was put in place a couple of years ago is.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we, I, I'm not going to count my comments against the three minutes. But first of all, I just want to say that I do broadly view our role as a home rule community and as leaders of our community. So I fully support helping our most vulnerable citizens. But we do need to be precise and clear in how this is going to be administered and how we're going to provide and determine this. And I do think that operating within the township is the, is a good first step. Because they do understand how to deal with those of us who are most vulnerable. And I think, I do think we need to do something. With the level of that, of course, is something council needs to determine and discuss. Okay, I think I hit my 20 seconds. I'm going to start with, and again, I'm asking you either yes, no, or I think 20 seconds. So one, two, three sentences, if you want to clarify. I'm starting, I'm sorry Jamie, Ward 1, I'm going through Ward 1 to Ward 9. So you can say yes, no, to consider this, or a very brief statement. Councilmember Matthew, Ward 1.
Mayor, I think that you hit the nail on the head that we do need to be very precise. I don't know that starting off with having a blanket open conversation without a basic framework is going to be helpful to anybody. I feel like it might just be a waste of time. But I would be entertained, a, an actual conversation with proposal of what things would look like and how we could be precise in the future. But this seems overly vague right now, and I don't know that it'd be a good use of staff time.
Okay, so that's a no, at, at this time, but perhaps in the future. Ward 2, Councilmember Bowler.
I agree with Alderman Matthew, I think that this is poorly vetted, there's not really a lot of information. And we also need to keep in mind that the council members have a fiduciary responsibility. And I'm not sure that the role of a municipality is to provide direct aid to the citizens. There's a lot of other organizations, businesses, even insurance companies are waiving premiums. So there's a lot of umbrella that's taking care of needs in this community.
Okay, thank you. So I take that as a no. Council, Councilmember Milliwambe.
I'm going to be a no as well because I, I agree that the proposal, at least this initiative is a little bit too vague. I, I have no idea who we're talking about, what the needs are. And I also ha, I don't have an idea right now, who is getting their needs met within the community or not.
Okay.
So I think we would have a
We get, I have to, we, we need to Yes, your 20 seconds, I'm sorry, Moboka. Councilmember Eman.
Yeah, I'm a yes, I think it's definitely important to have this conversation. However, it's to inform something more precise going forward. I think we will get a lot of relevant information from others as we discuss this. It provides an opportunity for input and it, it takes it to the public arena, which is very important. I maintain that we do need to balance our responsibilities with, with data-driven need. But having a conversation will get us closer to that point.
Thank you very much. Council, I'll take that as a yes then. Councilmember Painter, Ward 5.
No, I think that having a further conversation about this will just stir up more widespread panic on this. When we have everything available within our community. And I think that you people that think that the city needs to kick in, which we really can't because dragging on this, we may have to dig into $9.5 million. No, no.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carillo, Ward 6.
I'm a yes, all needs certainly are not being met. And we need to kick in to, to fill in the gap, to ensure the wellbeing of our community members. And I think that there's nothing wrong with having an open, transparent conversation about this in public without all the details needing to be baked in ahead of time and behind the scenes. I don't think that's a democratic process and I'd like to see us have this conversation in public.
Thank you very much. That's a yes, Councilmember Carillo. Councilmember Black.
Thank you. You all read my lengthy response on Friday. I, it sounds like I'm in alignment with Jamie and Terry. I'm supportive of a fact-based thoughtful conversation. But I, I want to be crystal clear, we are not voting on anything next week. And any suggestion to that is disingenuous. So I, I'm open to getting the facts on the table, hearing from our nonprofit partners, and then making the appropriate recommendations from there.
So is that a yes or a no?
That I, that is a, I will, I will have a discussion next week, yes.
Okay, a discussion next week. Next, Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bray, excuse me, Ward 9.
I'm a no on this proposal, Alderman Crable. And my reasons relate to the fact that this simply evidences a complete lack of focus on the roles and responsibilities that are charged to us as municipal officials. We have significant responsibilities and deliverables. And as we heard here tonight, we have some significant challenges coming. Some are known and some are unknown. But we've, we've got to garner our resources and take care of the citizens of the city of Bloomington by delivering the public health demands, by taking care of the water, by taking care of, getting the responses to emergency services. These are going to be potential challenges in the future. And, and we need focus and, and we need frankly to work together. And this just absolutely evidences a complete lack of trying to work with your colleagues.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
But okay, so we, we have, we did have four council members express interest in moving forward. But five council members expressed a, a lack of interest in, at least at this time, as I understand it, in, in moving forward with this. Thank you, Councilmember Crable. You, you brought up obviously a significant issue and you should be certainly applauded for that. And obviously there are a variety of different opinions, given that we're at 5-4 about going forward. But this is not necessarily something that we can't continue to discuss in the future. Because this is not going away. And we do know that our, the Americans And we do know that our, the American social welfare system and private contributions is like a fishnet. People fall through the cracks all the time. I remember it as a kid being on and off welfare. And let me tell you, yeah, there are cracks that are so wide it's sad. And I can't even imagine this. But the, the question is, is what the city does and how we move forward. So this is, at least right now, this will not appear on the council agenda for next week. And I'm going to turn to the city manager for a report, and then we will adjourn. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually have a fair number of items, but I'm going to move quickly. So the, the next council meeting is a special council meeting, and that's this Wednesday at six P M. And one sole agenda item, and that's for the consideration approval of FY twenty-one. The next council meeting after that is on April twenty-seventh. And just wanted to share that the presentation that was made by Mike Nugent in cooperation with the H R department regarding our property and liability insurance, that's got a renewal effective date of May first, so that will also be an April twenty-seventh agenda item for council to consider. Also, we were talking about the presentations that we've lined up, you know, for that Monday night, a, a week from now. Path is going to present about the services that they're providing, the United Way. Pawnee and David Taylor are going to come and present. And then also, prior to the council meeting, it's the township meeting. And if I'm hearing council correctly, it sounds like the director, Deb Skillrude, is going to be asked maybe about the programs that are in place, what the capacity is, what the needs currently are. Maybe questions about the reserves that they have. I'd like to, I, I think what I would do is I plan on prepping her for this possibility in the meeting prior to the council meeting. Also, possibly coming before council under the placeholder emergency order agenda item that we have is just something along the line of trying to provide credits for video gaming. That's an issue that we've heard and that staff is working on as well. Then shifting gears slightly, when we talk about the different programs that are within the community, our, our city website is an excellent resource, and that's citibloom.org, C I T Y B L M dot org. So beingprepared.org with the E D C and with the Chamber of Commerce are excellent resources out there for everybody. Shift gears just a little bit, and it's worth mentioning again, the farmer's market this past Saturday was a huge success. The drive-up lane was on Lee Street, had about twenty-five thousand dollars in total sales. The next time we'll do this will be early May, and Melissa Hahn and her team, the volunteers, did a tremendous job. The overwhelming appreciation out of the farmers selling their goods, it was tremendous. So it was a great thing to be a part of. Also, for our executive director at the library, Jeannie Hamilton, while we're not doing proclamations, under my comments, I want to share that it is National Library Week, and they are open, but it's, but it's through opportunities like this virtually. And I guess the last thing, the last meeting talked about golf a little bit. This time, I'm going to talk about public works, brush and solid waste pickup. And I know that I've explained this, you know, whether it's been articles, media coverage, that kind of stuff. But it's probably one of those things where we can't talk about enough. When we talk about those men and women that are out there picking up brush, solid waste, and really the big is garbage. When COVID nineteen first occurred, and we're talking about five weeks ago now, I cut that workforce in half. So there's fifty percent that are at home. There's fifty percent that are working. And the total reason behind that was trying to protect those employees and preserve the workforce. God forbid, COVID nineteen was rampant throughout the community. It's easy to cast aside brush and solid waste pickup. But garbage could become the disaster within the disaster. So that's why that decision was made. And I realize that a lot of people are at home, have time on their hands, and they're doing projects, bringing stuff out to the curb, shouldn't be on the road, but you know, to the curb. We're working with a reduced force, workforce, and we're working with even more being brought out to the curb. And, and that's not an excuse. I, I'll also take the time to share this real quick, is there were issues with brush and solid waste pickup, you know, last year or the year before. That's something that we were working on, what is a long-term solution? And then sure enough, this pandemic has occurred and it's sort of adjusted things. So I guess what I'm asking for is for some patience. And if you don't mind, from that picture window of the house, when you see a garbage truck go by, you know, wave to those guys that are out there doing this job every day. It's, it's frustrating for them as well that they can't meet the needs of the community like, like they want to. So with that said, Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tim. And, and actually, you've actually answered a question that I'm going to ask you yet again for the public record on Wednesday evening, where we have our, a regular meeting, where we have regular Aldermanic comments and city manager and mayor all comments. So just to clarify about brush and bulk pickup, because I think that's really important as a message to get across to our citizens. Thank you so much, and thank you all for what, for all that you've done. And thank, in my, our city council, you know, I, I realize that tonight we had the equivalent of like a five-four vote. But once again, we're all in this together. We all want the best for Bloomington. Thank you all for your work. Thank you all for your service. And we have much more to go through in this issue. That is the set of, excuse me, the set of issues dealing with the crisis facing our world and particularly our city. Thank you. Is there a motion, at this point, since we don't have an executive session, is there a motion to adjourn? I see the hand of Councilmember Bray. That's the first one I see. Is there a second to that motion? I see Councilmember Johnny Painter putting her face, her hand in front of her face, so I can't even see her. So she, I, I consider that a second. Madam Clerk, well, excuse me, that's right, this is a voice call. All the favors signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed can hang on. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Very well, all. Take care.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night.